Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the sick, the handicapped, the departed military personnel of this community. Thank you.
All right, our first visitor, Mary Weis.
Yes. Jason Sarazic.
Here.
Will Hammond, please.
Here.
Will Hammond.
Here.
Will Hammond.
Here.
Mary Tuck, please.
Here.
Elizabeth Thomas, please.
Here.
And here, there's Mike.
Here.
Romanis George Collins. Peter, 22, Ty King.
Here.
Parity, Bill Chilio. Southwood, DMS General.
Here.
Will Chilio, we don't have trouble over at the bingo, so that's why it's not good.
Bingo.
Bingo.
You guys did a good job.
Yeah.
All right, our first visitor, Mary Weis.
Yes, here I am again. And I'm still representing the historic society. So I brought these with me because you're all wearing training hoodie. Pass them along. And if they're any late, please send your audience to the. I have to say this, that I just seen a lot of you last night in the evening at the services over at Holy Child. Just to say this, we missed you. And do you remember where you were September 11th, 2001? I'll leave you at that spot. And go on and say you're all invited to come to our next program. And all our programs. They are free, open to the public. Todd DiPastina, I think still teaches one day a week at Ainsburg U. He is in charge of all the Southwest Pennsylvania Veterans Workforce. He has written books. And he's coming to speak to us about the home front, what it was like during World War II. Excellent speaker, talkative speaker. And last but not least, I want this in the records to be good. We are totally 501(c)(3). We do not take tax money. We do not ask for it. We do, we're not on your list of taxes. No. We're 501(c)(3). And believe me, we were carded to get up to 24. Well, we've only gone over 25,000 once, and that threw us in the arms of the IRS. So we're happy if we get 18,000 a year. And that's what we need to keep going. So if we find an opportunity to write a check or draw a box in green, we'd love to have that too. But back again, we are 501(c)(3). We do not accept tax money. And don't forget to come to your families, students, you're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Mrs. Falcone?
Yes. I'd like to say thank you for being so, and he's a great and true. Uh, I have two other questions. How many of you are in the ordinance against parking? Or parking with them? Please, please.
It doesn't stay.
I know that, but they said they were going to force them on the law, Mr. (inaudible). That's what I'm asking.
Once everything was redone.
Okay, can you force that on any street?
Technically, yes. But how picky do you want us to be on something like that?
Uh, just asking. Okay, number two, how did, how are the land and the sign that is a stop sign? I didn't want to have a venture. And we would prefer not to have a stop sign coming down when they open that street on May. With the bed reslates coming down.
Yes. Um, I want to look back.
Who, who isn't, I mean, them or us?
We are, as far as, as far as our traffic study went, when all of this started, there was no stop sign presented at that intersection. No have stops coming down.
Absolutely.
But there was not, there was nothing presented coming down. So there wasn't.
We just wanted to make sure that you weren't the one that had the stop.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Fryer?
Yes. Uh, not as your last. Uh, Mike Gable was here, the traffic engineer for Gateway. I think he was on the presentation. And, uh, I emphasized once again, it, it was so essential that Washington might be wide. For original four lane into South Bay. Then it will drive, maybe two lanes turn out to Bertha. And, uh, we talked about, uh, I mentioned that some of the business owners had suggested we might even give the land to 10 lot, uh, along the way. Three or four, four or five of them. And, uh, we were talking about, uh, what the cost estimate would be to actually do the wider, longer plan. And, uh, again, the possibility of having another land, some of them mentioned they might contribute funds for it. But I think, I think it was you, Mike, mentioned, that those are sort of arbitrary points of discussion. What we need is a drawing, an engineering drawing, made by Gateway, uh, so that we know what the costs are. And if someone is going to give us 140 feet over from, which is a yard or 12 feet or something, and we know what the value of contribution is. But my question is, where is the drawing? What stage are you getting us the drawings to take the next step?
We, we didn't do a drawing for that part of South Bay. Um, they looked, this is the task force.
Right.
And we, we didn't do a drawing for that. We, there was an initial drawing with P. D. Shepherd.
That's when P. D. Shepherd had developed a conceptual plan for that portion of Route 50 through South Fayette.
Yes.
And then that is a matter of, you know, all the way down the whole way.
Voice Road.
Right, Voice Road, maybe even going a little bit further, the Quinns, where the tie and the turnpike block.
Yeah, Southern Valley.
The Southern Valley.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a matter of, you know, South Fayette giving the green light to the task force to come up with more detailed drawings to prepare the cost estimates.
So Haberman, so the task force, I guess, I guess you guys haven't had an meeting since I met here.
No, we haven't, we have not.
So it's up to the task force to tell the traffic engineer, yeah, go ahead and do the drawing. Otherwise, we need more specific, and my, my track.
Yes, we have, we don't need to.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm pleading on the, the.
I understand, well. And I think, you know, we explained to you one of the, you know, roadblocks, um, with, I mean, you mentioned that there's business owners that would gladly give up right away.
Right.
But we're under the impression that there are also several businesses that will not be as favorable, you know, favorable to that plan.
There's one especially.
And that's, and we were told that if you go after this, it's going to put a, it's going to delay this process.
It's another phase.
Another phase.
It's another phase.
So they said, you know, it's there, the four lanes are there. Concentrate on the bridge and what you get now, and then we'll go, just like, because we're not going to, it isn't like we're going to tear the whole thing up and build it all at one time. It's going to be done in favor of obviously.
Well, let me, let me suggest and advise you, that's not the way to work. And let's, let's be open. Uh, yeah, excuse me, you can go, Tom. I thought they have a dozen engineers, no more than you and I can know about it. They agree.
I wasn't giving, and I.
Yeah, but they're good. That's, that's all right. My point is, uh, McDonald's, the restaurants, we're very incooperative. Not only with refusing to meet with me, or refusing to meet with the manager of South Fayette, don't you, engineer. All three of us, probably four or five times, stopped over there trying to catch the owner of selling vice deductions on 15 different, uh, McDonald's restaurants, you know. But my point is, their left turn stacky lane going into the McDonald's has to be eliminated. But there are other ways that they, they can get in there. And my point, recommend you, if you not consider two phases, I guess. You can't let a left turn stacky lane, little fast food store or restaurant, prevent a four lane widening of that section of worship, right? To South Fayette, to South Fayette Centrepus, to High Yatars. That, that essentially does. The, the, the first phase, you were talking about, Tom, uh, sorry, Mike, is, is, is a lot of you. It's, uh, it's widening, uh, I'm glad everybody likes widening more Chartier Street to the Borough Bridge Dines. That allows two lanes down Chartier, seven lane bridge, two lanes more across the bridge to the left, and two lanes back on. But that doesn't do good with South Fayette, and it's much more, that's a substantial. So I'd like, I'd really caution you about it. Be a little more difficult.
We, we will. As I say, when we meet again, we don't have a task force meeting, and I know that you should have in your future. We'll bring it, I'll make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, just like.
It's not something that we ignore.
No.
It's, it's something that we know that needs to be done. And we're working towards what can we get done now?
Right, if I, if I might to, I'm sorry.
What you characterize as gaping, is not gaping.
I mean, they're really, it's kind of, and as we've said before, that piece of the puzzle, that's like stating the obvious. I mean, please don't believe a suggestion that folks aren't thinking about an assassinate, and, and solidability.
Sure, I mean, if we had all the money in the world, we'd go straight down the, you know, he just said right now. But we have a lot of halls and ears, and we're one of four players in the least in this matter.
And as far as Bridgeville's concerned, frankly, we've gone through, on several occasions, dealing with all these folks. And basically, they take, when the Bridgeville kind of benefit out of what we're calling Phase One, which isn't just a Phase One. I mean, clipping off the stuff on the bridge, which is the, right, that's, that's, that's the, that's the main thing, right? And, and, and there's a 79 loop thing, and there's a Chartier thing, okay? And, and, and in talking with all the folks, and what's best, or act strategically to go after right now, not to the exclusion of other things, but right now, given what the realities are, bringing in the money, how you can fund things, and how you can make things happen. Frankly, I, I think I can speak for Tom, where is that, we're very pleasantly surprised with what's coming together in the heart of Phase One. As far as that section of it, again, to me, that's stating the obvious, and I think, like he said, that dime is going to flip automatically. Once the first stuff is in place, and probably before it's over, I mean, if you even look at the real estate market. I mean, when it's time for that to go, and the stuff develops on each side of the street, and believe me, if somebody needs to upgrade that, they will buy it, they will give it right away, they will negotiate that road there. Wide, and anybody grind on it, or even an African engineer to say. You're talking about Washington, like the South Fayette. The places that you're talking about, beyond our stress down to Bertha and all nine yards, of course, everybody wants to do it. And frankly, that's in the heart of South Fayette, that's big. Well, I think it's not something we want as well, right? But as far as what we're able to get now, already, which you must officially, and what we're going to be able to get, and that, that center view, what and stuff, a momentum watch, need to be other stuff. To me, that's going to be the shoe that drops automatically after you reach the first. Let me, let me, we can just describe this certainly a logical, uh, approach. But let me tell you what makes me nervous. 25 years ago, 1990, a couple of old climbers here can verify this. We proposed, I was on the original climbing list, but we proposed the same exact thing, so we proposed that thing of five lane bridge instead of a seven or something. And, uh, the, the, there were, it was supported by the news media, it was supported by the Chamber of Commerce, it was supported by original council, and South Fayette officials. The Pandot told us it's unnecessary to widen, uh, the, of Washington, like even the part from the post office to the bridge. And up through South Fayette, because they were going to build a new interchange, a I-79 at the West End and Voice Road.
I thought you were saying it's not.
No, no, wait, 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 that's.
I mean, I mean, that's so very interesting.
No, wait, wait, she's.
We're right, right, no, no, no.
Now, I want to make my, Tom, I want to make my point though. What happened is, because they did not build the interchange, original South Fayette, the economic development, their communities suppressed for 30, I mean, make my, make my point for 35 years. I know, I'm, I'm repeating. I know you know what I'm saying, but maybe the others don't. What's happened is, not only the fact that there was no realtor to build in Bridgeville, and in South Fayette until recently, the taxes on the families has been higher than it should be. But my point is, uh, they, I don't trust Pandot that they will build, so let's say they do the Chartier Street, seven lane bridge, over to around 1990. I'd get a timetable, they just leave it in over three years. But when you look at the complications of closing down 20 businesses to the left and the right, when they do the construction, which might even make a couple of them go bankrupt, and then doing it a second time, it's not a good idea. I'd like to see you guys be hard-nosed enough to say, you want the whole thing, you want it done right now, because I think there are engineers who will support the idea. I know you too, but in terms of the features of plan, Haberman supports it, and I'm assuming Joe does as well. At any rate, I'm just. I mean, everybody, everybody supports it all, including Pandot. And we're in a cooperative, I think, mode with Pandot, who've been very happy with their cooperation with us, I think, South Fayette, and up to there in us all as well. Certainly, I, they've never ceased lobbying for all of that, and every time trying to get everything we can get. But appreciate the failure to make it that, it's not a fail in the context of this phase. Well, right now, I'm not going to show you, this board has a foot on the pedal, and they ain't going to play it all. Well, I know it's a matter of money, of funding, but my point is, Bridgeville, the people in the town, and the families and the business owners have suffered so much, that are, most of them are unaware of. That they, I feel Pandot, the funding people owe us the extra funding now to do both Days One and Day Two, that's my.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, good, I appreciate it, good mind, Paul.
Um, he was the last visitor, was anybody else there?
Just sign in, please sign in.
I don't know the protocol. Frank Daly with Berg speaks in the wing, Paul. Um, the reason for my visit tonight, basically, was, uh, September 10th is whenever we found out that there was a significant change in the cost parking. In not only a lot across the street, but I guess I assume in the lots in Bridgeville. Went from a quarter for an hour to 75 cents for an hour. And my math tells me that's a 300% increase in parking fees. And that came on the heels of a 40% increase in the meter violation fine that went from $5 to $7. And when that information came to us, 75 cent an hour change, it came from the customers that walked through our doors, that were putting money in the meters. All right? That communication came from those folks. There was no communication from the parking authority. Um, that day, I actually sent an email to the mayor, asking him what role the Bridgeville Council, or role of the Parking Authority played. Well, how did they make the business justification for a 300% increase in the parking in the local lots here? In addition to that, why was advanced notice, communication, cooperation with local business owners, and the people that used it, or the residents in Bridgeville? What role did they play, or where was that communication, the participation? And from what I'm gathering, there really wasn't any.
Okay.
Um, local businesses usually lock, the other thing I had a question on, so, when I, it all came to me, I said, well, okay, I'll go to the Borough website. Looked on the Borough website, see if there's any information on the Borough website about this significant change. Not one bit of information on the website about the change, no communication. We go on to, and then it went from there to the Parking Authority, the information page of the Parking Authority, nothing there. So as a business owner, and also in behalf of the customers that come to the door, there's a concern there. So the next piece of the puzzle, I did ask, and I was able to secure it from the mayor's office, a copy of the July month end financial statement. And there's the month of July only, and seven months ending July 31st, 2015.
Financial statement?
The Parking Authority.
Oh, because we are, we're separate.
I understand that. Parking Authority operates separately. And I, and that's, I'm aware of that. So that's why I wanted to see what, where is their business justification for such a significant change in the parking fees? So, just throwing a little bit of math to some of the numbers, just to kind of get a feel for the financial influence of this impact, this is going to have for the Parking Authority? So if I went on and I added up the, the revenue just for the month of July, the revenues for the meters in Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 4, and Lot 5. And I did have a question looking at this, because it shows in the financial statement, the revenue for those four lots, but Lot 3 is missing. So it don't show any revenue for Lot 3 there. But if I add up the revenue just from the meters for those four lots for the month of July, that's $5,160. I add 300% to that. That takes that revenue to $15,480. The next one of these, interesting.
Those numbers again?
Pardon me?
Those numbers again, and what, what, from what to what?
Uh, $5,160 for those four lots. Lot 3's revenue is not listed, and I don't know why you have to ask the Parking Authority that. Because Lot 3 is listed as far as a, an asset on their financial statement, but it doesn't show any revenue on this statement. So that's $5,160. 300% takes that up to $15,480. The next big number on the, the revenue is the unallocated fines collector for the month of July. Now, I would assume that we're going to get a big significant increase in the meters. And actually, that was largest revenue generator for the month of July was the fines. If there was a 300% increase in the number of fines, because now people are having less quarters to go in the meter, or anything else, more activity, then we drive that fine number from $3,377 to $10,131. So just taking those two additional revenue increases, if your total revenue for the month of July before that was $12,758, the new revenue would be $29,832.
These are projections.
Pardon me?
These are projections.
Well, these would, you would make assumptions based on 300% increase in the, in the fees, in the, the meter fees. And maybe, you know, the, the fines collected, maybe a little bit excess, not, I don't know if it would be a true 300%, but there's a significant impact there. You all made out to the operating expenses for the month of July in the financial statement was $8,910. So if my assumptions are even close to $29,800, take away $8,900, the Parking Authority is going to have a net revenue for the month of July, or as an assumption, of almost $21,000. Where I'm challenged is, is where is the business decision-making process? How did the Parking Authority make this decision? Like I said, I'm not aware of any business owners that were involved in this conversation. I saw nothing that was published about it, nothing that was posted, when people came, put their quarters in the meter, when it started. And, and just sharing your frustration, I know, business owners and people that use the lot. Um, and the last thing I do want to throw out, so, if you could take that, throw that to a 12-month process, and you can see a significant rise. Now, I do know that when I spoke with the, I don't know if you're the president or the person, individual that is, leads the Parking Authority, I asked him, was this 300% increase across all parking lots? The meter lots in Ridgeville? And he said, yes. And I said, how about all other meters in Ridgeville? And he said, street meters, no. And I questioned, why not? And he said, street meter parking increases have to approved by Borough Council. And I'm not sure if that's an accurate statement or not. But I would assume that if it is, then why wouldn't the Borough Council be looking at the significant increase in that? And when I asked the individual, well, why wasn't anybody involved, he had no answer. Okay? So frustration is, customers that come into our lot, come into our business, come into our lot, like I said, now they go out, they get a fine, they can't throw their money in a box, in an envelope, stick it in a box. They have to go online, pay it, pay another dollar and a half, or $2, whatever they're getting charged, paid online. So that went from five to seven to almost nine when you paid online.
Nine dollars.
Okay? And is, is the fee, is the, is the fine now $9 too, or is that?
That's what my daughter said.
Right? All right? Yep. So, which was, my question to the council would be, which is, it's really a question, because I understand that making any change, this probably would be slimming us. But how come the Parking Authority can go with that type of power and make such significant impact to the business community and the people that come into our town, day in, day out? You know, you go back to, probably, I, my problem, I am one of the biggest, uh, businesses, or in time, that's against the June Day, okay? Because it just shuts me down for a day. But the whole reason for that. Bridgeville days is to try and bring people into Bridgeville, right? Show them they're a nice, we're a nice community, right, all right? We have nice businesses, come shop here, come eat here, come enjoy our community, but then we're going to hit you like this when you go and park your car. That's what frustrates me. And then the last thing, my last point, one of our customers did put a nice little, um, message on Facebook. She said, oh, new parking meters in Bridgeville. Only takes quarters. 75 cents an hour now. So now we got to run around with all quarters, number one. Number two, those meters take no paper and no credit cards. And it's 2015 was their statement. So that's my, uh, my piece. Not that you have any direction for me, but I just feel that, uh.
Frank, at that, just one, I'll tell you is that, um, I will, will look into talking to Parking Authority and find out what we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that. I need to get off of this.
So I know, how are we supposed to know that, what he's talking about?
You're, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, you're definitely miscommunicating. Our customers told us.
It's a good thing they can talk.
You know, and then on top of it, they go out there, they get their fine, you know? Because they, they didn't realize there's a quarter, when they thought they were coming in for an hour, we're going in for 20 minutes. And then they got it twice. No warning was not.
All right. Hey Frank, have you took your agreements to the Parking Authority?
Not yet. That's next week. This, we just became aware of September 10th. Did we have any official date, is there an official date of when this all changed? Did I even ask somebody, when did they change all the meters? Because that just didn't happen. Did they do it in the middle of the night? Because I never saw anybody in the lot doing any of the work changes in meters. And they had to change every meter in every lot. And I never saw anybody doing any work. And they're all different meters. Meters take quarters and dimes, which is a note right under, quarter zone. And I didn't, I am aware, I think they came from someplace. Just, okay?
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Frank, uh, anybody else took my favorite sandwich off? You don't want to ruin this business?
Minutes. Motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of August 10th, 2015 workshop meeting as submitted. And motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of August 10th, 2015 regular meeting as submitted.
Vote. Okay.
Uh, Jason and Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number four, 2015 coin repair project. Motion to Borough Council regarding the middle of current estimate number four, 2015 coin repair project to soilite construction in the amount of $43,897.60 for work completed to date. Remarks, the estimate has been reviewed by engineer sites. Thank you.
Okay.
Jason and, uh, Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Police pension MMO, minimum municipal obligation stipulation. Motion to Borough Council regarding receipt of police pension, uh, minimum obligation of $63,379 for the 2016 budget year, as prepared by manager Collins. The pension contribution for 2016 has been calculated to continue at the maximum permitted. The pension contribution for 2016 has been calculated to continue at the maximum permitted by Act 600-8%. The actual review is conducted each year to revisit the required contributions. Bill Henderson and Jason, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Non-uniform pension MMO, minimum municipal obligation certification. A motion to the Borough Council regarding the receipt of the non-uniform pension MMO of $25,735 for the 2016 budget year as prepared by Manager Collins. The motion. Jason and Bill Henderson, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2015-06. A motion to the Borough Council regarding the resolution number 2015-06 as per Pen Doc, requirements 1.10.14, signs and banners across state highways. The resolution resonating the intention of the Borough of Bridgeville South Bay Rotary Club to place one banner across State Route 50 to be installed September 15, 2015, and removed October 5, 2015 for the Rotary, Rotary Club Chili Cookoff to be held October 4, 2015. Motion. Nino and Neil, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2015-07. A motion to Borough Council regarding resolution number 2015-07, a resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville opposing the records in compliance with Municipal Records Manual approved on July 16, 1993, in accordance with Act 428 of 1968. Per the Municipal Records Manual, the public records listed for destruction are hereby listed in Appendix A, page 1, and have been made part of this resolution. Nino and Bill Henderson, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
I don't know, those are all the boxes in the office. All of those are.
Right. Motion, oh, I'm sorry. Resolution number 2015-08. A motion to Borough Council regarding the resolution number 2015-08, a resolution confirming that the Borough of Bridgeville is formally requesting a grant from the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development in the amount of $11,250 for demolition of a structure located at 71 Barrow Road. The structure has been condemned and abandoned by the owners. Who's calling this? Uh, yes. There's votes, motion? And Nino, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2015-09. A motion to Borough Council regarding resolution number 2015-09, a resolution determining that the Borough of Bridgeville determines and declares that such structure identified for demolition individually and collectively constitutes blighted property in the municipality as defined by the Urban Redevelopment Law of 1945, May 24, PL 1978, June 23, PL 556, number 94, as amended 1988, March 30, PL 304, number 39. Demolition property address, 71 Barrow Road. Nino and Jason. Bill list. Motion to Borough Council approving the 2015 bill list. Nino and Bill Henderson, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Payrolls. Motion to Borough Council approving the payrolls of 2000, oh, I'm sorry, September 18th, 25th, and October 2nd and 9th of 2015. Bill Henderson and Neil, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly reports. Motion to accept and pay any commissions due to August 2015 Real Estate Tax Collector report. Nino and Jason, all those in favor? Motion carries. A motion to accept the July 2015 financial report. Nino and Neil, all those in favor? Motion carries. Motion to accept the 2015 police report. Bill and Bill Pelosi, Bill Henderson and Bill Pelosi, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the August 2015 zoning report. Bill Henderson and Jason, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Real estate tax refund. A motion of the Borough Council regarding the following real estate tax refunds due to change in the assessment as requested by the real estate tax collector. Year 2015, lot, lot, block 322-B-182 for the amount of $142.30 to Donna Goldstrom. Also, year 2014, lot, block 322-B-182 for $142.30 for Donna Goldstrom. And year 2013, lot, block 322-B-182 for $142.30 for Donna Goldstrom. Year 2014, lot, block 255-E-378 for $157.93 for James and Kimberly Kirby. And year 2015, lot, block 322-G-278 for $114.81 for Ashley Moritz, for the total of $699.64. Bill Henderson and Bill Pelosi, all those in favor? Motion carries. Committee reports. Administration, Bruce is not here, so we'll forget that. Finance, Nino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The general funding is $1 million, $230,635.87. Source fund, $327,331.70. Garbage fund, $68,907.90. Capital improvement, $25,115.90. Liquid fuel, $176,002.10. Line, line item of engineering illegal will exceed the budget project due to unexpected project budget the year of 2016. Work will, will be the first week of October. So, there's a lot of work that's being done for the 2016. I also had a meeting with the order manager, and I noticed there's a lot of charges sometime that have been done from requests from council. Sure it's necessary. Maybe let's make sure that we are a little more careful, because these people work, they do a lot of favors, but then when they've been ordered to do some work, they have to actually have to get paid. So that, let's try to eliminate it. There is other way things can be done with a little bit of money. There's a lot of things, a lot of times it's being asked from council, check this, check that, check that, which a lot of times it's just something that we already know, and so maybe there is other method to do this. Maybe call Lori for apps, or let's use a little bit different method. We can save a little bit of money. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Nino. Parks and Recreation, Jason.
Well, baseball, fall ball, and soccer's, there's a little swing, we'll wind it down here in another month or so. The parks look good. So I care more about the block and how we move forward, get the funding for next phase.
Agreed. Thank you. Public Works, Mr. Pelosi.
Public Works, just what Nino says, they're spending a lot of money extra. And we got this project on Barrow Hill with that wall, and Joe told me that the Borough guys don't want to tackle it, and I feel they should be able to, to save us some money, because you put that out there, it's going to be a big buck. And I feel we got, put these guys in the right place to, you know, start doing this little kind of work. Even if you get a pipe or talk 100 feet of pipe, they should be able to do that. Rather put out a contract, we got to save money somewhere. And I'd like to get a meeting with them guys too, and see which way they want to turn.
Can you, can you meet with the Public Works guys and see what they're, what they're comfortable doing?
They have looked at the plan, Joe met with them, and explained the plan to them, and they feel like they don't have the knowledge to do it. They don't feel like they, they can tackle it.
I mean, I understand, I understand where they're coming from. I mean, we can't, yeah, it might cost to have somebody come in and do it, but how much would it cost if they said they bit off more than they can chew, and they go and do it, and all of a sudden?
Well, you could hire somebody to come in just to handle, just and let them.
If that's the case, I mean, that's the case, that's a, that's a whole different.
Somebody that knows something, well, come in and tell me that here.
Somebody would do that.
Oh, yeah, you could, you could do it.
That's something I'll tell you.
I mean, it saves Bridgeville a lot of money. This guy never gave a bit, huh?
Talk to Lori and see what.
He's still like.
He's laying out, I mean, me and Joe looked at it, I mean, it can be done. You know, nobody wants a temp.
They're afraid to.
There's nothing to do, I went through that with my folks, it was, I don't understand the curve.
I said, we'll talk to, we'll talk to you guys, because I understand where they're coming from. I don't, I wouldn't want to do something that I wasn't comfortable doing, and then it costs you a lot of time, because I.
Be the right people, do the right stuff.
You're an electrician, you're a plumber.
It's up to you, but it's just like, I don't counsel.
Is the idea you're putting forth perhaps to hire somebody on a very short, temporary, like for, just to oversee this little project called? A consultant? Is that the idea?
He wants these workers' labors.
Right, and hire a consultant to supervise them, to show them, this is how you do it. Interesting. Could have some, could have some.
Public Safety, Bill Henderson.
This month we met with, within committee, we'll continue our lease contract negotiations, so we spent a considerable amount of time doing that. Didn't have a formal public safety meeting this month, but we've got some things that we've been looking at in terms of the parking issues in town, that we will, we will have a public safety next meeting, and then take any of those thoughts and address some of those issues. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Mayor.
I'll follow on, that the items that were passed at the last meeting, I think it would plenty of reviewing those, including the streets whip rule, ordinance of applicability to, at the last meeting, you excluded Baldwin Street from the streets whip rule, you voted out of that. As I said at the last meeting, I have some concerns about remaining in force for St. Clair Street, Main Street, Ramsey, but not Baldwin. I can see both sides of the issue, and I look forward to the public safety committee meeting that you're talking about, you know, for you to come to a recommendation to council for next meeting.
The streets you mentioned, Pat, haven't been enforced for 25 years.
Right.
The additional streets you mentioned, just as the other one wasn't. So, we are considering that, and we will address it.
Couple of other items at the top. The street, the McLaughlin Run. If I understand correctly, Lori, the center of the, of the stream is the edge of the property owners in McLaughlin Run behind Baldwin Street, typically? So, the property owners have responsibility for the wall, the trees, the whatever that's on their back?
Yes.
And they have control of the ability to solve, you know, if they've got a wall problem and they've got a tree problem, they, they should be.
They should be the ones that are.
They should be the ones that are taking it down, and they can deal with that.
Yeah.
Again, whatever DEP issues they have, it's on, the property owner can handle his own property, and that's his tree, that's his wall.
Yeah, well, there's only one thing with that, the borough ruined their walls, and they dredged them, so you can't hold people responsible.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to hold them responsible, I'm saying that if they want to do what you did, which was fix their wall.
Right.
It's your wall to fix.
Right.
Not the borough's wall.
After Hurricane I, there were some people that did go and fix their wall.
Yes. And so that's, their walls, their trees, et cetera.
Yeah, the rest of it.
The other item is the backflow preventers, not, it's a bad word now, you know, because water company uses them on the water lines. I guess there's no other word for it but backflow preventers on sewage lines, or check valves. You had a really great idea that went out almost a year ago, and I was wondering what the status goes on, perhaps moving forward?
As far as?
As far as the residents of Baldwin Street, helping them with putting in those check valves or backflow preventers. I thought it was a, I thought it was a really good idea.
I can pull the letter back out and give it to council and, and we'll, we'll want to know, I guess.
And that was in conjunction with the request that they operate their lateral as part of us to get more information.
So we help with the backflow preventers, then they're up for their lateral, then that's up.
So it's about 10 to 15 of them.
It's kind of a, when else?
I thought it was a really great small sample to work on, on looking at the bigger problem, with a small test group, so.
I'll fill that out and send it off to everybody again, so they can have a view.
The last item is to touch on something that Mary brought up. I was at the memorial on September 11th, and there were some very good presentations. Our fire chief made an excellent one. But as he said, I thought the best presentation was when the little beeps went off and the siren sounded for what seemed to be a fairly routine call. And the firemen who were there quietly gathered and without any commotion proceeded off, got into their fire trucks, and went on to risk their lives to protect our community. And I thought about that, and I thought about how many times that happens every day, and how grateful I am for those individuals that provide the services for our police, our fire, and our EMS. That's all?
Thank you, Pat. Police Chief.
No report.
No report.
Listener. Thank you, Mr. President. We have my written reports, just a couple highlights. We have the layer scrap of the zoning ordinance updates that have been sent by, we've finalized the VPVs in the county for a review that sets us up to be able to proceed with the public area in October. I think we're basically Barbie Avenue or Arctic Avenue property next to where it'll be completely over processed and taxed as of the next year. Joe may elaborate for novel economy ongoing on in Lori as well, and the upcoming second phase of the consent decree. The stated deadline for finalized moves has been moved to date of October to honor the ongoing negotiations, which are part of having to announce to the regulators and all the engineers in the, for. The regulators and all the engineers and the, uh, four lawyers group, which, which is part of been involved in a certain week. And we're a future project next month on that. And finally, I think we mentioned before about the, uh, we've got talked about the neighborhood plans. Jack, you can set back on the, based on the discussions.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Uh, to your Joe's, please.
President, uh, come along to the 2005 pavement maintenance program. Uh, Pennsylvania American War is done with all their work. They bought the Ridge Road done for us. And I'm, uh, trying to get a pre-construction meeting scheduled up and receive with the next phase of the work. Uh, contract B, the Bar Hill road repairs, uh, contract with Key Rolson as they're executed. We'll be scheduling a pre-construction meeting with Emily in the next couple weeks before they get scheduled that work completed. Uh, we still have an outstanding, uh, punch list of items on a 2014 sanitary sewer CCTV inspection order, jet jack. Uh, we're trying to get that resolved. Uh, the CD42 grant pre-application approved in resolutions and the slums of White Resolution. The demolition of 781 Bar Hill Road. Uh, that, we submitted the pre-app to the Shore West Council, helped us last week by the deadline. And, uh, we'll use those resolutions to fill out the full application and submit them to the, uh, Shore West Department for processing. Will be, uh, in October. The New York Street Storm Sewer, uh, we completed our existing condition survey. We looked at the size of the watershed that comes into that area there. The rear of the property's on, uh, New York Street. And determined about 33 acres of land that come to that area. And the existing, uh, storm sewer is there as a 15-inch tier called a height. That's, uh, probably on the world about 75 or years old, or older. And it does not have adequate capacity to handle the flow. So therefore, uh, in order to meet the adequate flow, the, uh, pipe will need to be increased up to a 24-inch diameter pipe. So, the estimate of probable cost for the replacement of a 15-inch storm sewer, or a 24-inch storm sewer uh, will be about $206,057.50. So, uh, that's something for council to think about. And I would recommend that when we go in there and do that work, that we possibly make the repairs to the sanitary sewer that are in the same vicinity. Uh, where we have a, uh, a very odd, oddity in the, in the sanitary sewer where it comes down and it doesn't make a sharp drop and then it turns, turns down a little further. So, it would make sense to take care of that. I think it's about 120 feet of pipe hole back there. That's about another, I think it's about $59,000, Lori, I estimate. So, uh, we can decide what you want to do with that project.
Well, a quick question, if we, as far as the, if we haven't had any problems with the storm drain?
Right.
The rain that we had in June, if we continue to maintain that, will we be able to budget that for 2016?
I think we could probably budget for 2016 more. You know, one thing, you know, we haven't had any significant storms since June. You know, I've got a situation in another community where someone's waiting for me to come up with one of these big storms. I understand we had the opportunity to go there because we haven't had the big storm.
Okay, we were okay in June.
Yeah, we were okay in June. So, we've, we've been monitoring it and, uh, we're just keeping an eye on it. For now, we're budgeting for 2016. The capital expenditure.
Anything else?
I've got more. Well, you approved the payment to, uh, soil construction for the, uh, uh, point repairs to date. And within, uh, pre-construction meeting, the jet jack for the lining contract, they are going to provide us with the schedule. Uh, inside pipe is significantly completed with the 2015 CCTV inspection cleaning. Or review of the, uh, data that they've collected and review, making regulation for final payment will be satisfied or reviewed all information. Uh, the ADA door opener, so I'm guessing building in a apartment, uh, whether or not it realizes. There's handicapped accessible, uh, openers on both sets of doors to, uh, let people in. Uh, that work is being responded to via the County Department of Economic Development. And once we get an invoice, we'll, uh, submit that for a payment. Uh, I believe that's fully funded by the, uh, the grant.
Yeah.
And then, uh, we went over, uh, the, so it's all out.
Uh, I was wondering if it's all business, but since, well, I'm Joe. Uh, why can't you like, just we can't manage?
Oh, yes.
There's something I want to bring up now.
See, I would bring it up now. Yeah, I'm glad, that, that, the workshop we had brought you that information there relative to the line striping there. Uh, related to intersection Hickman Street and, uh, Washington Avenue. Uh, Pendon had agreed to, uh, complete that line striping per the plan as maybe, as part of the steps to improve the traffic flow on Route 50. So, um, I asked for a motion to approve the, uh, line striping per the Phase 1A improvements. Hold it.
Is there a motion? Second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That's the first phase of the task force.
Phase one.
One A.
Yeah. One A.
Thank you very much, Joe. Bill, Chile, I think, no? So there's no fire report. I do want to make a, uh, we had our 31st annual block party. Was it last week? Maybe the weekend. And, um, the firemen brought, uh, new fire truck over, which, you know, they operate anybody who has a block party right now. And it was wildly successful. And I just wanted to thank Bill, even though he's not here, um, in public for bringing the truck. It was a big, big hit. Uh, South Bridge, Dan.
Um, do have statistics for you for the last two months, since I wasn't here last month. So I'll provide this after the meeting. And, uh, also wanted to let you know that finally, after an ambulance accident back in July of last year, we're finally getting everything back on the roads, back to the factory at a tune of $150,000. And, uh, so it'll be out there in the next month or so. Nice shiny news, so. And definitely.
Did you get a new one or?
Reach out to you.
Reach out to you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you, still here for the library? Uh, Manager, Lori Collins.
Um, since I was on vacation, I didn't do a written report. I just want to touch on a couple of things. I did already report that the garbage bid has been advertised. Give it up and we'll be off in a second. We'll let you know, uh, what, what we received with those bids. And in the meantime, we'll go over with the information that we requested that we gather. Wanted to know the council president, Tolmar, and I met up with Representative Wardake...
Or TK. Or TK.
To review events within the borough and the task force objectives. He understands what the task force and these counties are trying to achieve. And we'll continue to assess any way that's needed. And I did talk about we are past Phase 1 and the grant for $215,500 for McLaughlin Park. It now has to be approved by the National Park Services. Um, there will be a meeting scheduled on October 8th at 10:00 AM in McDonald um, to continue to pursue assistance from the article for online and the municipalities that started back...
It's a lot of assistance from the article. Correct. It is, is the idea is that nine member communities who submitted information and request the article and gather and use resources and equipment and manpower to address fire issues.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Okay, got it. And they noticed, and that the back gathering will be held on this day for those who wish to attend. So I think that has an effect and everyone's invited. Um, we're going to have a flu shot clinic for employees, spouses, council members, families. Um, on Monday, September 29th at 8:00 AM. In return, we'll be taking, so anybody that wants to come stop here, get a flu shot. We're trying to make it easy. I had the real flu, believe me, you don't want to get it. And if you think you have it, you really haven't. So, please go to the shot. Um, and, uh, Engineer Haberman and I met with Andy Waffle of the SBC, along with representatives from Peter Sanchez and South Dayette regarding the impacts of the Southern Beltway that will connect by 79 Morgans Road and Washington Pike. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss concerns and identify areas of, of the study and the process, the roads that are going to be affected and what's going to be happening because of this. And additional meetings will be scheduled. So, I'll let you know when that happens and, uh, and, uh, we'll give you an invite. So, it was just initially just to get the managers and the engineers in to just start talking. And that's all I have.
Uh, all business? Anyone? I have something. Um, the neighborhood plan we talked about, uh, at the workshop. We are looking at, looking at, uh, two neighborhoods in Bridgeville. One is the Baldwin Street slash Bar Hill Road, or, or, one from Baldwin Street out, uh, towards Upper St. Clair. And then the other one is the Cook School Friar Hill. This is up by Cook School Road, uh, park and everything. And basically, it's a little mini, what do you call it? Mini urbanism plan for just a specific neighborhood in Bridgeville, true specific neighborhood. But wanted to see if we could vote on actually have room for implementing this study. So you can kind of look at these two neighborhoods. They are, there's a lot of change going on in both of these areas. Bar Hill Road and, and Baldwin Street, obviously, uh, with what's going on there. And then, uh, up at Cook School and Friar Hill, um, with what's going on up there as well. There's a lot of new development going on and kind of want to look at it from a Bridgeville point of view. And how we can improve this, for those two areas. Is there anybody, any comments, discussion?
Is there a formal motion?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm making a motion.
Sorry.
I'm making a motion that would...
I just want to say something.
Yes.
Channel 11 made great coverage of the police accolades. Officer Young visited, gives him an aid stand. If you haven't seen it, go online, look, it's cute. In Bridgeville, please, a nice name.
Thank you. It's also on our Facebook page too.
Any, uh, comments on this? Is there any? Making a motion, anybody want a second?
I'm making a motion.
So, tell your name.
Second.
Any discussion?
Might I just comment? You should consider this two separate project motions. So you can vote on them all at one time. If somebody under deserve a nay on one or the other, you can chime in, like you're voting to, to separate, um, proposals. For the same price.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Any other, any other all business?
New business?
I have two questions for the engineer real quick. Um, Ridge, that the area where Kaid Water Company did Ridge Road. There's also the area where the, um, replaced water line.
Okay, on the Bytemore Street.
Exactly. Um, are they coming to do that? I can't remember what the deal was.
What the deal there is, is they asked that we do it as part of our contract.
Okay, that was the...
Right, and that's what we're going to do and then they will reimburse the burden.
Okay. And do we have an idea as to timeline?
Late, late September.
So this year?
This year, oh, yeah, this year.
Okay, so we're shooting for this year.
For this year.
Anyone, um, any, he leaves any clue as to what Pendon is thinking about doing Washington Avenue's resurface?
The discussion that I had this afternoon with their project managers, they're looking to do it, start here in the next two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks.
That I wanted to, was trying to, trying to get that coordinated with that, that piece of concrete.
Okay, so you...
I'm working on it. So, they want to get it done before the year, which I'm a little bit surprised myself.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that's a good question.
If you notice, uh, they are striped, new stripe, I mean, redo the stripes all over Bridgeville. Except that because there has to be.
Yeah.
So, the stripe, no sense, it was the painted time. That's why they are not done. Just in case somebody want to know why or don't knew stripe here. Because we will not be done. Thank you.
One last one.
Sure.
I had really not given much thought to the impact of the Southern Beltway on Bridgeville. Mainly because I looked at connection I would take, which is off of State Route 50. I'm curious. Some people mentioned to me that if you're on Voice Road, your logical way of getting to 79 now would be to head towards where the Southern Beltway is going to connect.
Right. It should, in preliminary discussions, it actually should help us.
That's, and, and helping South Dayette, a great deal. Let me ask Lori, when you were at this meeting, did they think that traffic at the end of Voice would turn left instead of right to go to 79?
Yes.
So, very similar to the long belabored Voice Road intersection.
Yes, that was one of the things. When we were having the discussions on where all these cars were going to go. One of the discussion was, it may be, maybe a positive for us as far as those vehicles instead of coming down, you know, entering high 79, or going to make a left or maybe Upper St. Clair traffic that's coming through there will go and they'll make a, a left there. So, um, you know, further discussions, but it actually may be a positive for us.
The one thing Pat knew, the preliminary design shows 79 going over the expressway. And then there'll be a significant cut of earthwork down there. So that would be kind of where that clover leaf is. And then the other thing is, there's the one, that's supposed to tie right into, uh, Morgan Road and Cecil Township to take people to the National Cemetery.
A full, a full clover leaf, yeah?
Yes, that's what the preliminary design shows.
Right, and so you get on the Southern, Southern Beltway and it would fly over 79 and you'd fly 79 and...
It'll be under it.
Under?
Yes.
Under. And I'm curious to see the amazing engineering that it's all going to take. Thank you.
Any other new business? Motion carries.